Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Washington State University Board of Regents. We will now convene our November fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Before we start, first of all, happy Friday, and a thank you to all of you who participated in yesterday's committee meetings. And then I'll just will have a longer set of remarks this morning as we begin this meeting. So first of all, we do respectfully acknowledge that Washington State University's location statewide are on the homelands of native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. The university expresses its deepest respect for and gratitude towards these original and current caretakers of the region. And I do want to thank all of the leadership of Washington State University, staff, faculty, community leaders, members. This has been a special week. On Tuesday, I was in London Heathrow Airport. And as you know, it's one of the largest airports in the world. It was bustling with travelers. But on that day, just like here in the United States, we have veterans today. And the airport was completely silent in remembrance of our veterans. And as someone whose family represented all of the armed forces, brothers, sisters, fathers, grandfathers, Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard, my family is a representative of all the veterans. And so before we proceed, and I know it's a little tardy, but for all of the Washington State University veterans, our ROTC, our leaders who serve, I just wanted to express gratitude and say thank you also on behalf of our Washington State University Board of Regents. Also, wanted to thank you all, and yeah, as we, as we prepare to celebrate with our families for Thanksgiving, what it means for us to be leaders at Washington State University. It's a privilege. It's an honor. We are actively listening to all of the voices that give us input throughout state, throughout the nation, and globally. We sincerely care about what people think, but more importantly, we consider all of the systemic actions that are underway and keep in mind the unintended consequences and think through risk analysis and look at the data, and it's, it's an enormous lift. And so with that, I just want to thank our president, Betsy Cantwell, and our provost, Chris Riley Tillman, for leading us in the transformation of the university. It's an enormous lift and having to make tough decisions. And I just wanted to say this out loud because I know change is really, really important. And it, and it takes, it takes fortitude, but we approach it with a great amount of respect. Respect number every individual for the people of Washington State and and, and just keeping an eye on the future. That's what we're here for. So with that, yesterday, we reviewed at least four hundred and fifty pages of homework that was given to us. And today, we will conduct our meeting with the, the rest of the homework, which is six hundred and seventy-one pages of material that was given to us to last week to prepare for this meeting. So just so you know, you do pay, pay attention to those details. And, and then to give you one last insight, I'd like to share with you that we had an event last night with the University of Washington Board of Regents. And now more than ever partnering with our colleagues at University of Washington is, is important that we have to do things together and collaborate in a way that we may not have done before. And we're just taking our challenges on, eyes wide open, knowing that the future of Washington State and the economic impact that our institutions thrive is is vital. So I appreciate the leadership and the engagement of all the Board of Regents at our two universities in Washington. And so with that, the Board of Regents welcomes the public at all of our meetings and also provides viewing access via live stream on YouTube. The live stream link, along with the recordings of past meetings, can be accessed on the Board of Regents website at regions.wsu.edu. Now, for the record, I would like to ask Tracy Giordal to take a roll call of our regions.
All right, when I call your name, please say here. Brett Lincolnship.
Here.
Enrique Serna.
Here.
Hardy Dickinson.
Here.
Amina Hussein.
Here.
Sam Hunt.
Here.
Tracy Klein.
Here.
Doug Pika.
Here.
Dan Ramos.
Here.
Use the shower.
Here.
Howard Wright.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you, Tracy. So the Regents will now hear from those who have submitted a request to make public comment. And if you wish to make public comment at future meetings, so by submitting an online request at regions.wsu.edu or emailing us at regions@wsu.edu or reaching out to the Board Assistant, Tracy Giordal. The next scheduled opportunity to address the Board will be during our January twenty-third, twenty twenty-six regular meeting. The Board will neither discuss or debate topics raised in public comment. This is not because the Board does not value our comments and perspectives and people who share, but because the Board wishes to discuss or debate topics at time when the public is notified that such discussions will occur. Regents may ask clarifying questions of those providing comments. For speakers who are in person, we'll announce your name when it's your opportunity to speak at this time. Let's see, Tracy will help us, but for the speakers participating virtually, you will remain muted until we call your name. And at this time, would you please also provide your name before you address the Regents and introduce yourself? And we'd love to hear your backgrounds briefly. So Tracy.
All right. Our first commenter, still, please.
We do ask that the comments be brief and try to stay within a two-minute timeline, please. Thank you.
Jamie Reed is the first public commenter.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Hi, Jamie.
Indeed.
My name is Jamie Reed, and I hold a Master's of Science in Clinical Research Management from Washington University. I'm a clinical researcher, a lesbian, and I served as one of the panelists in one of the CME courses that your university now has under suspension. I am here today because Washington State University abruptly suspended the Society for Evidence-Based Gender Medicine's Continuing Medical Education modules. These courses were the product of nine months of work by your own CME team. They were developed, reviewed, and approved according to the standards this university expects. It is reasonable for a university to pause briefly a program out of abundance of caution, but that is not what we are seeing here. These courses have now remained suspended for two weeks with no mandate from the ACCME, no accreditation warning, no compliance issue, and no external requirement to remove them. This was an eternal decision, and the longer this unmandated suspension continues, the more troubling the implications become. At this moment, your university is signaling one of three things. Either, one, that your own CME staff made significant errors after months of due diligence. Two, that you have identified substantive problems in the courses, in which case transparency is owed to the public. Or, three, your university is responding to political pressure, not evidence or accreditation standards. None of these possibilities reflect well on a public university. In the meantime, physicians are being denied access to evidence-based medical education, education meant to reflect the rapidly changing internal landscape and international landscape of youth gender medicine. And I believe that you are not offering protections to gender nonconforming young people from avoidable harms. I am asking you to take, to take the actions that restore trust. I am asking you to reinstate these CME courses immediately, stand behind the work your own team produced. And if no errors have been identified and none have been communicated thus far to the public, then this suspension cannot continue. I thank you for taking the time to hear this today. I run a national organization called the LGB Courage Coalition. We are available at any time for questions, concerns, or further information, and we are committed to supporting evidence-based driven decisions that would make your institution stand up in the light of international scrutiny. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
The next public commenter will be Stephen Mally. Stephen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Is he on video? He is, just saying, virtually. Oh, there he is. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Stephen Mel. I am a environmental science major. This is my senior year at WCU. I'll be graduating this December. I am the treasurer of the ASWSU Group Environmental Sustainability Alliance and a member of its subcommittee Fossil Free WSU. I'm speaking here today because I am deeply concerned about how WCU portrays itself as committed to environmental sustainability while still allowing its endowment funds manager, the WCU Foundation, to continue investing millions of dollars in fossil fuels. The situation has gone on for a long, long time now. And if there is concern of the portfolio not performing well after divesting, there have been reports showing from two major financial management firms independently that concluded that there are no financial impacts from fossil fuel divestment. There have also been several reports on how US university endowment portfolios have performed well after such divestment. If you would like to see these reports, please contact me and I will provide them. So what I'm asking today is, as you have heard from other Fossil Free WSU members, that you work with the foundation in aligning the investment policy with WSU's sustainability goals. Or if such efforts are currently being made, please make this more aware to the public. I want to be proud of my school and my future alma mater that this is an institution that is environmentally sustainable in all of its dimensions, including its endowment portfolio. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Next public commenter will be Lauren Patterson.
Hi, I'm on Zoom. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you. Thank you.
Hello, Washington State University Board of Regents. My name is Lauren Patterson, and I am a reporter for Northwest Public Broadcasting. But not for long. I was laid off, and my last day will be December fourth. Despite the closure of the Corporation for Public Broadcasting hitting us hard, we were already well into a budget deficit because of the decisions made by NWPB General Manager Kara Williams-Frye and Murrow College Dean Bruce Pinkleton. These included the creation of new departments at the station with high-paid director positions before their direct reports were hired or objectives defined. Our major gifts officer position, a job instrumental to bringing in big amounts of money to the station, was left to languish for two years despite an internal employee with more than a decade of fundraising experience applying for the job and being denied the opportunity. Many of us tried to warn the university on multiple occasions. In May, twenty twenty-three, a survey was sent out asking about the performance of Bruce Pinkleton as dean. Many NWPB employees at the time filled out the survey together, warning the Murrow College about the reckless spending and goalless initiatives by Williams-Frye, Pinkleton's direct report, that were leading the station into financial turmoil. We were ignored. Another survey was sent out in the fall of twenty twenty-three to NWPB staff by Kara Williams-Frye to understand how to improve working conditions at the station. Multiple employees brought up the budgeting concern. Again, we were ignored. Despite a record fundraising amount from our loyal listeners during our latest fund drive, it's not nearly enough to dig us out of the hole Williams-Frye has created. To pay the price for the risks she took, multiple employees have been laid off or had their hours reduced to fifty percent before consulting any managers or staff about options or working with our newly formed union. Almost all of the people at NWPB who have been laid off or had their hours reduced are mothers with children. My beat, which will cease to exist by the end of the year, was to cover local news in North Idaho and Eastern Washington, especially the border areas between the states. This included coverage of the investigation around the four University of Idaho college students whose convicted killer was a WSU graduate student. The optics of WSU now laying me off, the reporter who covered the case extensively and who would have reported on future incidents involving the case appears punitive. Why would a public media station's round of layoffs, the first round of layoffs, target the hyper-local reporter? To me, this feels like an attack on free speech. There is supposed to be a firewall between the university and NWPB to protect the integrity of our reporting. Now it appears, and this is in a transcript I can send you from a staff meeting, that there is a secret group of five unnamed WSU officials along with Williams-Frye deciding who will be laid off. Their metrics for deciding who will be laid off have not been shared with staff or union members, despite us asking multiple times. It's also coincidental that I happen to be the first employee on staff who approached SAG-AFTRA about the possibility of forming a union at NWPB and who worked over the last three years to help make it happen, something multiple managers at the station were aware of. I was the only staff member to ask about layoffs at a recent staff meeting and was told there was no information, only to be laid off myself soon after. Make no mistake, I fear retaliation for speaking out and telling the truth. I know of at least two former employees who have emailed you with their concerns, and I know you just got back to them before this meeting, but I sincerely hope you will follow up with them because their concerns are very valid. It is my assumption the university will double down in protecting the perpetrators of this mess while attacking the very people who have tried to warn them from the beginning and that the financial woes to come will continue to be paid for by callously and without cause laying off the very people who have helped make NWPB the respected and trusted voice of this region for more than one hundred years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Lauren Gallup, who's presenting virtually online. The next public commenters will be Tom and Linda Niho.
Hi, this is Tom Rahuel. I'm a nineteen sixty-nine graduate of WSU. As a fifty-year WSU graduate with multiple decades of contributions to the university, we find it interesting that in one day, the Cougar president can be highly complimentary of an A.D. and a few days later, fire for no stated reason. The incident, this issue isn't personnel-related. It is messaging and how information is presented to the public. This has happened in the past and needs to be fixed. We fully understand the need to grow NIL money and increase support for all athletics. We are on board with and will continue doing that. What we don't condone is not treating everyone with dignity and respect. We've heard that Ms. McCoy was terminated by a phone call on Veterans Day, a phone call that, and not in person, is extremely rude, cowardly, and not the way Cougs should do business. Now Linda would like to speak.
Linda Nahuel, nineteen seventy-one graduate of WSU. I am here to share my perception of the announcement regarding the change of leadership of our A.D. It is not about an individual. It is about the bigger picture, how Cougs are losing trust in the university. Yes, we need more money, but are we losing the secret sauce that makes us special? Are we so short-sighted that we don't care about the loyalty that has been established with old Crimson? Are we so short-sighted that we can't stand to help the Cougar Collective? If we need an aggressive fundraiser, go find that person. Nobody has all the skills. Why did we fire someone who brought us out of the depths of the PAC-12 implosion and hey, got buried in the sands? Why didn't we help her? My plea for today is simple. What can we all do to restore trust while still reaching fundraising goals? We're tough. We're not quitters. Go Cougs.
Thank you, Tom and Linda. The last commenter will be Glenn Osterhout.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear and see you. Thank you.
Okay, great. So Glenn Osterhout, class of nineteen eighty-three. You can tell from my hairline that I've been a longtime Coog. Been working in earnest, really, in the last twenty years on all kinds of projects with Washington State, both large and small. And what I want to do is just make a statement that I'm inspired by President Cantwell, and I'm inspired by her leadership. And I like the bold approach that we're taking to Washington State University. So inspired, I crafted a column back in late September called "The Great Ascension of Washington State University." And in that, I outlined the fact that WSU must take the leadership position in the PAC-12 conference. And that is for good reason. I think it's important for all of us to understand that no university in the new PAC-12 has the vibrant economy that we do in the state of Washington. And much of that resides right here in Greater Puget Sound. I've seen President Cantwell over here a lot, and I encourage all of Washington State University to spend more time in the Greater Puget Sound region because that is our competitive advantage in the PAC-12. There's no university in the PAC-12 that has the vibrant economy that we do in Greater Puget Sound, and we need to seize that. In that vein, we are developing WSU Corporate Cougs, where we are developing alumni bases at all the major corporations in Greater Puget Sound. The column that I drafted, "The Great Ascension of WSU," has received twenty-two thousand clicks to read. That's clicks to read, not views. So it's resonating very well with Washington State University. The primary focus that I emphasize in the, in the column is that WSU has to take leadership in athletics in the PAC-12 conference. And we all know the reasons why. It's the greatest marketing campaign we have. It, it increases enrollment. It increases fundraising university-wide. It provides spirit to WSU alumni and friends, and it's a huge economic boost to Eastern Washington. I'm all in on making WSU athletics the best in the PAC-12. Secondly, I talk about enrollment. Enrollment needs to improve, and we all know that. And we have a heck of a case on why young men and women should go to Washington State. You saw in the recent Princeton Review that WSU was ranked number one in the nation in student satisfaction. And that survey was a hundred and seventy thousand students nationwide, and we finished number one. We're also number seven in the country for best alumni networks. Thank you to Mariah Carey or Mariah Mackey, who I see on the call here, Cougs first, and everyone at WSU that has made that happen. Quite frankly, I think that's too low, especially as WSU Corporate Cougs gets in place and more and more Cougs are engaged with students at Washington State. Keep in mind that that number seven ranking, we are ahead of Georgia, Ohio State, North Carolina, and Virginia. So I think we all need to understand that President Cantwell's bold leadership, her plan, and her vision, for those of us that have been around a long time and have watched this university, we are all in to make that happen. And we're in full support of the decisions that are being made to make us better. And the reality of it is that we have to do a much better job of raising money at Washington State University. And leadership in any department, in any area, that needs to be a primary focus. So I want to thank you for your time. We are all going to wear Washington State University loud and proud every day, and we have a terrific message for everyone, and we need to get it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Tracy, are there any more public comments? And we sincerely appreciate all of the input and certainly the sincerity and the passion with the messages that have been shared this morning. And we have many voices that we listen to and everything that you have shared with us today, we will certainly keep in mind and consider as we continue to all move Washington State University forward. So thanks very much for the public comment, and we'll continue to invite others and see more comments in January. So thank you very much. With that, we are transitioning to our Board of Regents meeting. First of all, I'm really pleased to introduce our newly appointed faculty Regent Tracy Klein, Dr. Tracy Klein. Regent Klein succeeds former Regent Judy McDonald and is a second faculty member to serve in this role on Washington State University Board of Regents, and she will serve a three-year term. Regent Klein is a professor at the WSU College of Nursing, where she began her tenure in twenty twelve. She's a family nurse practitioner with expertise in both primary and urgent care. In addition to her clinical work, Dr. Klein teaches advanced pharmacology, rational prescribing, and clinical decision-making. She also serves as a longstanding preceptor for the Pharm D teaching residents from both Oregon Health and Science University and WSU. Dr. Klein is a two-time graduate of WSU, having earned both her PhD and postmaster's Family Nurse Practitioner degrees at Washington State University. Regent Klein, Dr. Klein, would you like to add any comments?
Thank you, and I appreciate the warm welcome and look forward to serving WCU.
Thanks for joining us. Really appreciate it. Since our last regular meeting in September, the Regents have remained actively engaged across the WSU system, and I'll just share a few highlights. And then invite any Regents who wish to do so to share additional updates. On September twenty-third, Regent Wright attended the Carson College of Business Power Breakfast Signature Speakers Series Event in Seattle. On September twenty-fourth, Regent Hunt, who's online with us this morning, attended a tour of Myers Point Environmental Field Station in Olympia. This site hosts significant activities in environmental research, training, and outreach. Regents Pika and Wright attended the October sixth Community Development Roundtable event where President Cantwell was the featured speaker. On October seventh, I attended the Washington State Academy of Science twentieth anniversary celebration along with a fellow Regents Serna and Wright, where President Cantwell served on the keynote panel address regarding the future of research and innovation in Washington. Regents Serna, Klein, and Wright joined the College of Veterinary Medicine Dean Dory Borgensen in Seattle at the Dean Dory Borgensen in Seattle at the Dean's Dinner Celebration of Excellence on October ninth. On October twenty-fourth, Regents Pika and Serna attended the Taste of WSU, celebrating WSU's arts, music distinguished alum and Washington State University-inspired food. And on November fourth, Regents Serna, Hussein, Pika, and Wright had an opportunity to celebrate and honor the two thousand and twenty-four Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award recipient, Tricia Rix, which I heard was a wonderful event. I could go on. And I think the point is that while we sit in this room, and it appears that we just sit in this room, we don't, because after and in between all of our meetings, the Regents are out and about in the community. And you could almost use the word ubiquitous because where we are in the world is in support of Washington State University, but also to be, you know, where the voices are in community with people throughout the state of Washington. So I'm just super grateful to Washington State University Board of Regents for the sincerity in which we carry on our duties for the university. Are there any, did I miss an event or an attendance? Regent Hussain.
I attended all of the multicultural ceremonies at Washington State University, the shaping, cash, and vibes, and this host, I mean, hundreds of children, and trying to get them to pursue higher education and specifically become a Coog. So that was one of them, and then I also attended the fiftieth anniversary of the African-American Student Center at WSU Pullman, and I attended Student Government Council last month to meet with all of WSU student leaders.
Thank you, Regent Hussain. We really appreciate you listening to all the students wherever they are and sharing the insights with us. Thank you.
Can I embarrass you a little bit about the fiftieth anniversary event? You might have won an award at that event.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I got Student Advocate of the Year for under, oh, excuse me, I'm flattered. I was flattered to get the award. But yeah, I got the award, and it's a super important award that basically talks about the first woman, first black woman to get her masters from WSU. And so being under a legacy like that, I mean, I was honored.
Okay. So with that, that concludes my chair report. I will now turn it over to President Cantwell for her report.
Thank you. As you know, I delivered to you fairly comprehensive president's report, which is in your in your
Our six hundred and seventy-one pages.
But I do just recommend for everybody and anybody who is listening to, it is not an odious amount of pages in the six hundred and seventy-one to pick it out because as I, as I read, as I do my presentation, I do not give you every single detail that is in this report. Our attempt for these reports is really to go over the accomplishments in all of what I call the enterprise areas of the university for the time period between this meeting and the prior meeting, so that you have a record both of our accomplishments and really our path forward in the context of focusing on how we meet the future and actually design our pathway between now and that future. So we own it. We don't let it merely happen to us. So in the name of, you know, defining our accomplishments in enterprises, and I know that word doesn't appeal to everyone, but it really gives you all the sense that each component of this system is large and complex and financially and organizationally and operationally. And calling them enterprises is a single word that gives you that sense of complexity and operating parameters. So on the Academic Enterprise, which is led by Provost Riley Tillman, we are working very hard on increasing retention efforts and system enrollment. They are similar but different. We have been obsessively focused on enrollment around first year enrollment. And we are now obsessively focused equally, two things can be true at once, in making sure that those that come to us stay with us. And so both of those affect the top-line enrollment numbers that we see. And really, for Provost Riley Tillman and myself, retention is is really our key job. If you come to us, we need to give you the capacities to succeed. And that means you have to stay and get the degree that you came to get. So we are doing campus stakeholder surveys. We are really looking at transfer student enrollment. We're obviously, I think, and you've heard from Provost Riley Tillman on this, looking at and succeeding in increasing first-year enrollment. On the Academic Affairs Program Optimization, we've developed a university dashboard which will identify trends and patterns to look, and I can't tell you how much I want this, system-wide at how we can identify trends and either modulate them or enhance them. If we see trends in financial allocations, trends that tell us we are doing the right thing or the wrong thing, we need to know that in advance. And so, as you know, a data geek, but I'm really, really excited about that capacity to kind of do integrated modeling along the way. The Academic Enterprise is doing unit evaluations. They're developing communication strategies that will help us both with analyzing the information that we have in the dashboard, but also our annual evaluations. We are developing, and you have heard about this, a workload policy, and therefore there is a task force associated with workload policy. The task force was established in January. Is that correct? Which, and it is system-wide. We will have a new workload policy for faculty by fall of two thousand and twenty-six. Historically, we have not, unusually in the higher ed, we have not prescribed or been clear about workload requirements associated with teaching, research, and service. We do a disservice to our constituents, our students, and our faculty by being unclear about that. So it's a heavy lift. Provost's office is really managing that. There's a lot of collaboration with colleges and down-and-in departments and schools, beta-testing different options. And you'll see faculty manual changes again in fall of two thousand and twenty-six. On Finance and Operations Enterprise, which is really the very large purview of EVP Brunelli, we are building financial KPIs. The FY two thousand and twenty-five outcomes won't be available until our financial statements are done. So I know you are all eagerly interested in reading the financial statements. That was slightly, yeah. Won't say that. But you won't see that till January. Reporting on budget variances to actuals for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, will be presented here, but also in subsequent meetings. So remember, we're in a financially highly variable environment, month to month, quarter to quarter, year to year, and I encourage everyone to pay attention to the details. On Employment Compensation, we have successfully implemented the faculty and administrative or AP pay increases. That was effective October first. This includes the first instance of merit-based pay for faculty since our implementation of Workday. We have hired Carrie Johnson as the new Assistant Vice President for Budget and Planning. She is a proud Coog. She will be a frequent presenter to the Board of Regents. So I hope you welcome her when she joins us. I love the title of this one, so since it brought me joy, I'm going to read the title of the next section, "Projects and Initiatives in Flight." So really, we're looking at capital projects and what they're doing. Schweitzer Hall is Schweitzer Engineering Hall. If you've been on campus, it is, it is really in the stages of furnishings and internal tweaks. Occupancy is expected in February twenty twenty-six. The USDA facility, construction is proceeding despite the federal shutdown. And the Integrated Science Building planning is underway for this facility. There's a lot of under the covers there, and I think we'll probably give you a, well, let's call it a strategy briefing on new buildings at the next Regents' Meeting where we really disclose the strategy for integrated or multidisciplinary buildings. It will be rare, rare, rare that at WSU, we build buildings that are solely dedicated to a single discipline. The world isn't going that way, meaning our problems are not single-discipline problems. Pedagogy is not going that way. Teaching and learning is not going that way. And our students will vastly benefit from learning in and doing their research in buildings where there are faculties from multiple disciplines and teaching and learning. And we are doing a space optimization study in Spokane, which really looks at the space we have and how it can be optimized for the future. I'm excited for when we can present that to you all. I don't know what the deadline is, but sometimes certainly within the next, the first half of two thousand and twenty-six. And we're working on always administrative efficiencies. At the Athletic Enterprise, enormous number of achievements for this group. They have been working very hard, and you hear me evangelizing this, on maximizing revenue and fan engagement. We are focused heavily on the fan experience around game day, so not just going to a football game or a basketball game or a volleyball game or a soccer game, but what you experience if you come to Pullman the day before, the day after, and the day of first-down Friday events. These are really focused on football for now because it is football season. For those of you that came to Coog Fest, that was in September, I think. Wyatt Flores was awesome, and it was a really, really nice event. We do movie nights. We do Saturday morning yoga, which I've done once. And we do camping with the Cougs. We are developing more specialized tailgates. So pay attention there. It, all of that work on the part of the athletics team has been incredibly well-received. In-game enhancements, you'll see, I can't even read these things, Glizzy Gliders, which is a hot dog drop. I think we all have to experience that. And all of our mini sing-alongs, which really people love. And then merchandising and branding. You will see a lot happening there. I will point to NIL and post-house settlement strategies. Still, we may say post-house settlement strategies, but there may be legal matters coming down at the federal level in the next year to two years that throw post-house settlement, if not up in the air sideways. So we are always keeping our eye on what changes may happen there. We have hired an NIL coordinator. We've launched a platform called Open Doors, like Endors, but Open Doors for streamlined opportunities for student athletes. We are really developing a comprehensive strategy that focuses for our student athletes on education, their education, their brand building in the age of NIL. And we are growing our scholarships for our athletics, for our student athletes. We have expanded significantly from two hundred and seventeen to three hundred, but potential at least three hundred and sixty-five for FY twenty-six. That's a big deal for the ability of students to participate as student athletes. I think maybe the other thing to focus on there, because it is always a focus for us, is academic achievement for our student athletes. We had a program record, eleven WSU teams, which posted perfect single-year APR scores. That is only the result of continued effort on the part of the whole system that supports the academic efforts of our student athletes. We had historic cross-country success this year, meaning the men's and women's cross-country teams both swept the two thousand and twenty-five WCC team in individual championships. We produce amazing runners. External affairs and government relations, you did get a nice briefing on that yesterday, and I think, that's about that today. So let's just point to federal advocacy. I myself have been in Washington less than I normally would, but turns out there's a lot going on at home. It is really important that we show up in Washington and that for all of our elected officials who are there, as well as for the people of Washington, for whom our voice represents a unique perspective of the value of Washington. And then WSU State Relations, and I've been on many, many, many of these, have met with twenty-eight legislators to share our priorities. I will be prominently walking the halls in legislative session. That's unusual. Just if you need me during the session, you might look for me in in the halls of government. Because that's where I'll be. We are working hard on sustainable aviation fuel. Keep your eye on that. That is an area where we have massive and really prodigious research capability between two campuses, and we have joined forces to, with the state and the federal government to do things like get funding for and build a sustainable aviation fuels R&amp;D repository. It'll be in a location near Payne Field. We are strong participants in the Cascadia Accelerator, which again is focused, and I am newly on the board, which is focused on the commercialization of sustainable aviation fuel capabilities. We visited the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, and I would say to any chambers out there that would like a visit from both our federal and state affairs team and myself, I believe chambers are critical components of the economic fiber of states like Washington, and that we should be participating and presenting as often as we can. Administrative operations and institutional affairs. We introduced yesterday, but we'll reintroduce Carrie Davidson as Chief System Administrative Officer. Why do we have a position like that? Because we are advancing system-wide innovation as fast as we can to not only stay up with the changes that are occurring across higher ed, across the state, and across the nation, but do the work necessary to be ahead of those changes. And as I say, designing the future we want, not merely responding to the thing of the moment. Carrie is very experienced in those matters. I can't see behind you. For those of you that haven't met Carrie, please, she will be everywhere all at once and brings an enormous amount of energy to our aspirations. In that sense, you heard from the provost yesterday some about the system-wide redesign process. I would encourage all of you who are listening to go, if you are interested in how we are designing our future, go to thenewchapter.wsu.edu website, where you will be able to see an ongoing stream of information about how this is working and changes that are ongoing at WSU. We have, in the context of designing our future, launched a fairly significant public survey. It's simple, but we really encourage everyone to engage. But we really encourage everyone to engage. We currently have seven hundred and eighty-three, it's probably more, so I would. Tell you that for surveys like this that are just asking all of our constituents from companies to faculty, students, and staff, to elected officials, to just interested community members. In communities where we are physically present, what do we need to be doing in the future to serve? This is a massive uptake, so there is a great deal of interest in that. We are, we've done discovery visits in Vancouver and the Tri-Cities. We are covering Western Washington in a week and then Spokane and then our online communities at the beginning of December. A lot more to come there. You'll care about this every time I do a report, but I do encourage. Gosh, to go to the actual available public material, it's easier to click on the link there for the public survey than it is for me to review this really long URL. Marketing and communications, again, massive kudos to Pam Scott for coming in and. Also being everywhere all at once and helping us. Reach more and more people with information about what we are doing. We are really improving our overall reach and reputation measures as we go. There are there are a lot of markers in this report about things like where are our positive headlines? What are our emerging strengths? We're improving in our communications capability around applied research and land grant mission narratives centered on innovation inclusion. And regional service. These are all important to know what it is that draws interest to who we are. We do have continuing challenges. Many of you know them. Pay attention to how we may continue to engage in areas where our public and our students want to hear about us. And we have a digital campaign. Going on out there maintaining visibility around who we are, what we represent, and where we are going in the future. Call that the brand visibility campaign outside of our peak enrollment recruitment areas. So there's a fair amount of successive metrics on that. We have. Launched a campaign called It's Go Time, which is our next evolution in our enrollment marketing. And that is runs through June of twenty twenty-six. I encourage you to take a look at that on our website and see what you think. In tribal relations and Native American programs, which I consider a unique enterprise aspect of WSU, because it is the place where we are. Solidly and fully committed to engaging with independent nations. And those independent nations in this case are our tribal and Native American nations, both in the state of Washington. Regionally in the Pacific Northwest especially, and even nationally as it makes sense for us. We are implementing a strategic transition plan to to really look at our commitment to tribal nations. Focus on high-level engagement and 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 continued student success. So liaison engagement with the nations in terms of what do you need from us and how do we serve? And real focus on our Native Nation students and enhancing their capacity to succeed. Really to get what they came to us for. We have created a dedicated high-level position, which is. Which is in the in the publicity stages right now of Special Advisor and Tribal Relations Liaison to the President. I cannot tell you how much we all need to appreciate Zoe Heigl Strong for the load she carried. And the amount of jobs that she did. No one besides someone like Zoe could have been able to do that for this university. And that's one of the reasons why we are separating out a tribal relations liaison directly working with me so that my perspective is always. How are we working as almost nation to nation with our native nations and especially in the Pacific Northwest? The Provost's office will maintain and focus and enhance the student-facing operations that were under Zoe Heigl Strong's. Leadership, including the Tribal Nation Building Leadership Program, the Native American Student Services Program, and the Native Cougs Scholars Fund. For which I must say we thank the state of Washington during the latest budget crisis. For continuing the Native Cougs Scholars Fund. It makes a huge, huge difference to those students. They would not be able to be with us otherwise. And the V P R's office will enhance support for research both involving tribal nations as well as. Enhancing our ability to support tribal nations who wish to develop their own research programs. We have an enormous capacity at the compliance side that. That most tribal nations don't carry and we will assist with those capacities. On the research enterprise side, you heard a lot from them yesterday, but I will just say the federal landscape and funding challenges are. Are really enormous. They are changing every day. Kim and her team dance really fast to make sure that we are supporting our faculty. And supporting the student research programs we have first and foremost, and that we are. Looking at how we design our future and research capacity so that we don't merely wait to see what happens next. We are really doing a lot of government outreach, a lot of non-federal. Partnerships, including corporate partnerships in the state of Washington. Really, all hands on deck. We are looking very, very hard at energy futures. I talked about sustainable aviation fuel. Agrovoltics research, for those, this is like a personal favorite, which I've been involved in for many years, but we have an enormous capacity. And agrovoltics, which is the intersection of agriculture and solar energy production. In ways that buy down the cost of solar energy and create whole new capacities to to support for 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 those physical facilities. To support agriculture, meaning there's shading, there's there's a reduction of watering needs, there's a whole goodness. System in agrovoltics for which the state of Washington is incredibly well poised, particularly as climate. Adaptation becomes something that we need to do even in the Pacific Northwest. The WSU Foundation. I attended a recent. Foundation Board Meeting. Our our board members are phenomenally committed to the future of this institution, and they put a lot of skin in the game. Their time, their treasure, their, you know, their nights and weekends, and I think we really owe them a lot. We, I presented some key university initiatives, but as you know. Right now. Athletics is top of mind. Because we do need to succeed there and we. We'll just point to got a transformative ten million dollar estate gift for veterinary medicine. To improve clinical care, to upgrade our. Our veterinary medicine hospital on the Pullman campus. Without these kinds of gifts, we would not be in the position we are in and able to maintain that position. Of a world renowned veterinary medicine capability, truly world renowned. And then we just won a nineteen million dollar investment for whole grain and food system innovation. You all have heard me evangelize. That the capacities at Washington State University represent the ability to develop systemic solutions to, they could be education problems, it could be research problems. In this case, this investment, which is a really canonical for us, it's a ten million dollar bio-innovation grant from the Washington Research Foundation. It's bolstered by matching funds from the Washington Grain Commission. So this is the kind of partnership we will be talking a lot about in the future, and it means that the work that we do is directly. Impacting the capacity of the state. To deliver grains, both to have both commercial impact as well as health impact. So those two things are not anathema to one another. Commercial impact and health impact. And we, this funding will establish the Center for Health, Environment, Food, and Farming. So think about that as really. The most impactful kind of example of how we go from basic research and agriculture, another stalwart capacity for this institution. To impacting. People's pocketbooks and their personal health. And I think I will end there. For those of you that care about the details, and they are important. Please go to the materials, the publicly available materials, and if you have questions for me in the future, you can reach me at president@wsu.
And that was all in just six months. Yes, it's an enormous lift, so thank you.
There's a huge team that does all of this. You all know that, but I will not do this kind of thing without without saying this is. This is an amazing team effort and an amazing team and go Cougs for everybody that that is all in on designing the future of this institution. Thank you.
We have Regent Dickinson and then Regent Wright.
Thank you for the comprehensive report. When I just quickly assimilate what you just walked us through, and I look specifically at the very, it's very intentional of the people that you have in this room with your team, with. Provost Riley Tillman and everybody right here. And so I say this to everyone, but Nancy, to you. The financial transparency, the foresight to. Work, and I know Chris is leading some of this work to around space optimization and understanding. Where the public might sometimes look and want to understand why these these big buildings and how do they work and do we have butts in seats and. The fact that you have awareness, that your whole team has awareness to why that's important for us and how we really get organized for what we may need in the future and then also be mindful of what we're asking for. I greatly appreciate the signaling that you. And your team are doing to lean into Coop Nation to go and ask them to be bold with us. And perhaps Coop Nation is to, we love your spirit and your camaraderie and your viewership and quite frankly, we need your money, so. I appreciate that there is a boldness to that approach. Your decisiveness on what needs to happen. Is unique for higher education and. I think I speak for the board when I say we stand behind you in the clarity and conciseness in which you were trying to adopt and push the strategy forward.
Could I could I augment something about we need your money? Because we do. But it, what I think I fail to say sometimes, which is equally important, is that we are in this moment where we need your money. As in a philanthropic sense for. A few years, well endlessly maybe, but really my commitment and our commitment as a team is that. In designing the future, we will design the financial mechanisms that build other revenue streams that 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 take cognizance. Of the fact that part of our obligation is to build financial, new financial capacities. And we do talk about that with some regularity. There is just a gap period here between having only the two levers of tuition and state funding. And multiple levers that give us more flexibility. That we really need the supportive of it.
Thank you.
My last thing I was just going to say to there, I've had the opportunity now to not only. Participate and hear President Cantwell speak publicly, but also Provost Riley Tillman speak. And the unity and alignment of the constant drumbeat around the direction in which Washington State University is going, and the way you couple that. With the communication work and telling our story that Pam leads is. Just so good and we, just as a Coug and as a Regent, I'm deeply, deeply grateful for the pathway that we're on at this time.
Thank you, Regent. So Regent Wright.
Thank you. And thank you for the comprehensive report. The thought that comes to mind is they're on fire. I think the next meeting, I'm going to bring a fire extinguisher for you. And you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you. Quick question, I think directed toward Tracy and maybe Glenda. These meetings with Chambers of Commerce, Washington Roundtable, et cetera. The board, the regions represent, I think, all four corners of the state. Are we, and maybe we are, are we being included in this information? Can we attend with you? How can we help facilitate to support that?
I think that'd be awesome.
Yes, I think it would be a great way to show the part for the institution. We've only done a couple thus far and and part of our. Internal strategy in my team is to plan out these other events across the state, so we're hoping to do. One with G S I, we're hoping to do is one with Vancouver Chamber, Tracy's Chamber. We've done some, we've done a small part of the Seattle Chamber, not the larger, so. Yes, there will be lots of opportunities.
Anything on the rest side, and you know, one of the things we haven't talked about in my tenure here yet is the bread lab, things like that, so. I I'm volunteering for my region to be available to you.
Great. That is a great idea.
I would volunteer for central Washington because that's awesome, so. Christy's as well.
Excellent. Any other Regent comments or questions?
Okay, well, I too appreciate the comprehensive, proactive, thoughtful, transparent. You know, everywhere, all at once, President and Provost and team. We have a complex system. But we are super mission-focused at this moment and making tough decisions where we need to. But certainly all with an eye to an exemplary future for all Cougars. This is, you know. We're going to rise above any idea that we're mediocre. We are not. We are an institution of exemplary. Communities and members and will continue to lead in that manner. So with that, we are going to shift to our shared governance groups. And I would invite our shared governance partners to provide updates in their areas. And first to present is the Associated Students of WSU Global President Hannah Kramer, but. Let's see, do I have it right that she's not joining us?
Yes.
And our own Regent Hussein is going to help represent that report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. ASWSU Global President Hannah Kramer is unable to join us this morning. You will find her report in your packet, so there's another document, and she asked me to share the following with the Regents. Good morning, Regents! Exclamation point. My name is Hannah Kramer, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six A S W S U G President. I apologize for my absence this morning as I send you this message from beside my sister's hospital bed. I share this personal piece of information with you because as a global campus student. My situation today reflects that everyday realities many of us have to navigate. Managing our education alongside work, family responsibilities, and life events that unfold across different states, countries, and time zones. In my written brief, I highlight the strong advocacy already taken place within this community. Driven by students who are deeply committed to our edu, to our, their education and who want to feel connected to their institution. Even without a physical campus to anchor them. The slide I prepared on the screen in conjunction showing the faces of global campus students is meant to serve as a reminder on both fronts. These individuals whose lives, opportunities, and sense of belonging are shaped by your decisions. I encourage the board of Regents to view the needs of global students through a holistic and flexible lens. One that honors system-wide commitments to equity, accessibility, and the promise that every student, no matter where they are, deserves to be seen, supported, and valued. I encourage your board to center your focus on bringing the unified value amongst all WSU campuses. I appreciate your time today, and even though I am not able to present this message myself, thank you for ensuring that student, the student voices. thank you for ensuring that student, the student voice is heard and utilized in your decision. And I just want to say thank you, President Kramer, for this message and sending you and your family all the well wishes in the world.
And we, Regent Hussein. And we certainly wish Hannah's family well. Next up is our Faculty Senate Chair Ken Roberts.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you and see you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair Ramos, for the opportunity and to the Board of Regents. Again, Ken Roberts, I'm Chair of the Faculty Senate for this year. I'm a professor in the College of Medicine and you have my report before you. And I'll just go over some of the highlights. But before I do, just a couple of observations. I'm, believe it or not, approaching the halfway point of my chairmanship of the Faculty Senate. Time, time flies when you're having fun. And I just want to give a shout out to the Faculty Senators and particularly our committees and their chairs for the work that they do for the Faculty Senate. Because really, the, all, all of the report is the work of these committees. And for somebody who spent really their whole career in, in a college of medicine, seeing how much work goes on in the greater university setting and, and all of the things that the Faculty Senate looks at, reviews and approves, it's, it's, it's really an impressive amount of work. And the people who do this work are super dedicated to the high quality education for the students that are at our university. So I've learned a lot and I just wanted to, maybe you all know this already, but I just wanted to give them all a shout out. So a couple of highlights in, in my report. And this again really reflects a couple of key committees. And, and before I go on, not only do the committees do a lot of strong work in and of themselves, there's also a tremendous amount of collaboration with the Office of the Provost and the various Vice Provosts under Provost Riley Tillman. And we also get a, a great amount of direct engagement by the President. So we appreciate that partnership and it helps us all keep rowing basically in the same direction. But the first highlight I want to point out is some of the changes to the Faculty Manual. This is the work of the Faculty Affairs Committee and your former Faculty Regent Judy McDonald leads that committee. And they've done a couple of significant things so far in the first half of the year. And one of them is to review the Faculty Manual overall, just for compliance to new federal regulations and executive orders. And one of the, one of the ones that we've already confirmed is a, is a change to the actual statement of purpose for the Faculty Senate, which was to conform it to the language of the Faculty Manual. And in doing so, it removed a reference to diversity, equity and inclusion that wasn't in the original language of the bylaws in the first place. But again, it's part of an effort to just bring that whole document into compliance and to adjust the language such as to not draw undue attention to any crawlers that might be looking at all of our documents on our website. The second was also commented on by the President is the workload process that's coming out of the Provost's office. But we have now adopted that language in the Faculty Manual. So there's clear language around workload for faculty and what that means, both in terms of how faculty show that they excel in their work. And also we can recognize when faculty in some cases are, are falling short. We had a wonderful presentation by Senior Vice Provost Doug Collins just yesterday at our Faculty Meeting and, and following. We discussed these changes and we'll be certainly adopting them as an action item at our Faculty Senate meeting after the Thanksgiving break. Also, I think I touched on this last time. We've set up a new committee on faculty compensation. This is typically one of the primary legislative objectives for, at least as far as faculty are concerned. But we now have a, what, what we've done is we've actually fully staffed that committee with faculty and appointed all the members so they can begin their work and actually refine their charge. And so they'll be concerned with all aspects of faculty compensation and differentials in faculty compensation across our system in comparison with our peers. We, our, our academic affairs committee has been doing a lot of work around the changes that need to take place such that WSU is in a position to offer a 90 credit bachelor's degree. I don't think we have any of those degrees yet in the pipeline, but we're doing the work such that when the time comes, we are capable of, of offering those degrees. And again, this goes to initiative around flexibility so that WSU is in a position to be offering as many degrees as we can that meet the needs of, of those who would come to us as students. Also sort of along these lines, but a little bit different is there's a, now a revision process underway for revising our UCOR curriculum, or that is our general education curriculum at WSU. Again, hasn't been done in over a decade. So an effort led by Bill Davis, another Vice Provost, to bring that curriculum sort of forward and modernize it and, and put it in the context of where WSU is, is going now. So those are the, those are the big highlights. We, we did alter a couple of degree programs. We extended the Bachelor's Degree in Computer Engineering to the Everett Campus, which has a focus on engineering. And we eliminated the Bachelor of Fine Arts as a location at the Tri-Cities due to lack of enrollment over the last several years. So again, it's an effort to make sure we're watching where our enrollment is and where our enrollment needs to be and making the changes appropriate to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students where they live. And I think that is the, the highlights that I put in here are various speaker presentations for the Faculty Senate. These are really super informative sessions. We've had a number of great ones in the fall and we're lining up our schedule for the spring semester. The Faculty Senate is of course, in, in addition to sort of the administrative work that it does, it is a place where communication happens. So as Faculty Senate Chair, I'm, I'm really on all the leadership meetings that the President has constituted since she's arrived. And, and others on the Executive Committee participate in various committees as well. And we, we discuss all manner of things at the Faculty Senate, even things that we don't necessarily take action on. So with that, that is my report. Thank you very much.
Chair Roberts? Oh, sorry. We, we really appreciate your report. We're a bit distracted by the, the skeletal.
Is that a student or a relative?
This is my faithful companion. Goes with me every week. Never complains.
Okay. Well, thank you for the comprehensive report and all of the accomplishments. But are there any comments or questions from the Board of Regents? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Next up, we have Administrative Professional Advisory Council, newly appointed President Amy Robbins, who will present the Shared Governance Report. Welcome.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Chair Ramos. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone's time here today. Yes, recently elected Chair, but so excited to be here today to represent the Administrative Professional Advisory Council. I have been part of the council. This will be my third year. So just newly elected Chair, but have been a part of this wonderful organization. As you can see, we have six bullet points I'm going to talk to you about today. The Administrative Advisory Council is actively working to refine and align our mission with the university's six strategic pillars, ensuring greater coherence and impact across our initiatives. We are developing a strategic action plan to ensure AIPAC serves as a consistent and valued voice in the university's decision-making processes. We're working to highlight the diverse skills and exceptional qualities of administrator, administrative professional staff across the university locations, while positioning the council as a constructive campus-wide organization that contributes meaningfully, meaningfully to each WSU location. Our aim with AIPAC is to establish the council as a respected body, one with influence and purpose, one that is also presented in a collaborative and approachable manner. So we want to highlight our working together with leadership to ensure APs are valued and our voices are heard across campuses. We have designed a calendar of events that engage administrative professionals by offering programs and activities aligned with our interests and supportive of their roles across campuses. At our monthly meetings, we are inviting speakers from across our campus to share information with APs. And it's been greatly received. We've had higher numbers on our Zooms than we have in the past. So great professional development opportunities. We've had AI. We're celebrating Native American Heritage Month this month, next month, actually. So lots of great information being shared. We're coordinating inclusive campus-wide events that highlight the contributions of APs and reinforce our presence as a vital and collaborative part of this university community. We're also currently supporting campuses experiencing staff turnover. We've lost some of our members, so we're planning to do a special election that will be coming up soon. And we want to ensure continued representation across all campuses to fill at least five full council positions and five alternate seats. We're also currently looking at the number of APs across the campuses. So making sure that our ratios fit with the number of administrative professionals on each campus location. And that is the report that I have to share with you. I appreciate your time. And we appreciate working with all of you and look forward to our continued work together.
Thanks very much, Amy, and congratulations on taking on Chair. Appreciate you. What a great report. Questions or comments from the Regents? Okay. We'll see you next time. Our next report, Anne, is from our Graduate Professional Student Association's new president, Desmond Dabouage. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Ramos. I, I, I planned to be there in person, but unfortunately all the students could not come. I'm, I'm sorry to hear that Global couldn't appear also. But last time I was there, I mentioned that this year, majority of our effort is targeted towards, first of all, getting most of our members to participate in our event. And so over the past few months, that has been the core challenge for us, doing all that we can to enhance participation. And we do this because we understand that the current situation is a little bit anxious for graduate students. And we feel it ourselves as leaders. And so we are putting in a lot of effort, changing a lot of things to see if we can get more students engaged. And I'm happy to report that one of our recent events saw record numbers, which is still less for our total number. But for the first time, we hit about 250 participants in our event. And this was an event that had not been attempted before. We hosted a lunch on the Terrill Mall. And it was a big event, a long queue for graduate students to just come and hang out with colleagues and eat and chat. And it was really interesting for us. And so we consider that as one of the great accomplishments for the semester. Going forward, we are also looking at how we can do that. And I mentioned during my last report that one of the things we have come to realize is majority or some of our members have families. And so if the event is a little bit away from home, it's very difficult for them to participate. And so our efforts right now is channeled also towards events that we could invite family members as well. And so this Thanksgiving, we are hosting another dinner and hangout session in the junior ballroom at the Cab. And in this time, we are specifically inviting families to, to join us as well. And we are making preparations to give young kids gifts and, and so on to encourage their, their parents to participate in the event. We, we hope that we can get a very good turnout for that event as well. And it is also going to be an opportunity for those of us who can travel back home during this holiday to have some friends around to share that experience. And so we, we are really looking forward to that. One of the key things that we have also realized, and it's a common comment, is the graduate students, we, we are not as active when it comes to advocacy, legislative advocacy. And so this year also, that has been one of our targets. But we, we, we acknowledge that the challenge is that almost 90%, in, in the current Executive Board, about 95% of us are international students. And most of the things that we will advocate for does not apply to us. And so it really cuts down on the motivation. It, it really needs somebody who is very dedicated as a student leader to go about and very mainly speak for things that they may not personally benefit from. However, we are still putting in a lot of effort. Our Vice President for Legislative Affairs is also an international student from Iran, but he's very dedicated. And so so far, we've invited about three Senate representatives also to the GPSC Senate's meeting. And our focus is on both House Revs and Senators who are serving on the Higher Education Committee. So we have at least, we've spoken to three and we have two lined up. And I, I already listed all those who are, who have come and those who are coming in my written report. But we are making an effort to show that the graduate students are also interested in advocating for ourselves and for some of the policies that may benefit us. And we also have plans to go federal because one of the key things that really is important to us is having our dependents who are on, especially in this case, international graduate students who are on F1, dependents who be on F2 visas, and they are not allowed to work. And this is only particular in the United States. So all the other countries allow the dependents to work except the US. And so that is one of the efforts that we are hoping to drive out at federal advocacy. And in line with that, GPSC hosted the state-level Student Association, which is the Washington State Student Association. We normally do general assembly meetings every semester. And this year, GPSC hosted that at the Pullman Campus. And it was also an interesting discussion. We were able to put on some of our legislative agenda on this general agenda. And hopefully we can get to speak for these items, both at the state level and at the federal level. I just wanted to also add that personally, I am also taking a lot of effort to communicate the President's system-wide redesign to our students. I make sure I'm presenting this to the Senate and I'm sending emails to them for them to engage in the survey and for them to answer questions. Personally, I am also scheduling one of those 30-minute interviews to share what the student body may like to see in this redesign process. But I just wanted to mention that I really, really appreciate that effort. I can see all the vision. And so I am in full support of that. And I am working hard to communicate that way to my colleagues so that they can also get involved. So thank you all so much. This will be all from me.
Desmond, I really appreciate the quality of your report and the, just the, the deep engagement that in your community. Any questions or comments? Great. Thanks very much and enjoy Thanksgiving with this community there. Next up, I invite Vice President for Advancement and CEO Mike Connell to provide the report for advancement, which encompasses the Foundation and Alumni Association.
Thank you, Regent. Good morning, everybody. I see Mariah Mackey on screen. Good morning, Mariah, also occasionally referred to as Mariah Carey. Mariah, what's your name? You or Tracy or both. So Mariah, I'll hand it over to you for an update from Alumni Association. Good morning.
Good morning. Tracy's on here, actually. So I'm going to see if she pops up.
Tracy Apple?
Well, she is. I will go ahead and start with our report and we'll see if she's, she may, she's at work. So she may, as a volunteer. There she is.
Sorry, everyone. I, I guess I was expecting to be unmuted myself. So apologies, rookie mistake, won't happen again. Anyways, good morning from Vancouver. Thank you to Chair Ramos, the WSU Regents and President Cantwell for the chance to share what the association has been up to since we last met. The WSU Alumni Association continues to advance the university's mission by creating meaningful connections, fostering collaboration and celebrating the excellence of our Cougar community. So far this year, we've had the honor of presenting several WSU Alumni Achievement Awards, the highest recognition our association bestows on its graduates. Our 2025 honorees continue to reflect what it means Our 2025 honorees continue to reflect what it means to be a Coug. Verinda Bala, the class of seventy-one, humanitarian and founder of the AWB Food Bank. Dan Castles, class of seventy-eight, the founder of Telestream. And Linda Pillow, also the class of seventy-eight, who is Bellevue, was Bellevue's first female chief of police. Their leadership, innovation, and service show how WSU alumni continue to make an incredible impact in their communities and industries. This fall was one of our strongest yet for our signature events with the majority hosting sold-out crowds. The annual feast program showcased fantastic collaboration across campus, including the Wine by Cougars program. We also launched a brand-new event, The Taste of WSU, during last month's family weekend. It brought together alumni, students, and their families for a night celebrating Cougar-made products and live performances by the Cougar Marching Band and our Crimson Company Alumni Group. We also had the honor of showcasing some fantastic Cougs at the event. Former football legend Marcus Trufant and cookbook author and Next Level Chef Season Four finalist Megan Keno. That same Cougar spirit continued through our 2025 pre-game season, where we united Cougs from coast to coast with sold-out crowds, great energy, and strong partnership with WSU Athletics. Our digital networking and mentoring platform, Cougs Connect, continues to grow. We now have close to fifteen hundred registered users, which comprise of alumni, parents, and students. It's fun to note that Pullman leads in registrations, followed by the Global Campus. This fall, we launched our first formal mentoring program on the platform with the Global Campus. And later this year, we'll roll out another junior jumpstart with the Academic Success and Career Center. In collaboration with our partners at the Academic Success and Career Center, we hosted a networking social for Coug business professionals on campus for the Fall Career Fair. This was a great opportunity to share more about marketing, about marketing their hiring and internships via the platform. Over the past few months, we've seen more engagement than ever with users connecting for mentoring, networking, and event opportunities with a focus on first-generation students. Late last month, we completed a major project for advancement efforts at WSU, the Crimson Chronicles Oral History Project, which has seen success in both engagement and data enrichment. Throughout the six-month project, alumni called in to share their stories, stories of successes, Cougar love stories, faculty impact stories, and more. These stories and experiences were captured, curated, and preserved. In terms of data enrichment, the team has updated biographical data points on more than fifty thousand alumni records, including new contact and employment information, collected over eight thousand personal stories, and identified four hundred and sixty-eight new alumni households with an interest in donating estate gifts to WSU. The stories collected will soon be shared across WSU marketing channels to highlight the depth and diversity of the Cougar experience, continuing to build lifelong connections between alumni and the university. Stories will be shared with WSU Magazine, college news teams, and with our web and social media story teams. The project will be a valuable resource for WSU for many years to come. We extend our sincere thanks to all the alumni who participated. The resulting publication of photos and stories in both physical and digital forms is set to be released in April of 2026. Maybe you have heard about the WSU versus OSU Membership Challenge. At this point, we're two weeks into this month's Friendly Membership Challenge with our colleagues at Oregon State. This challenge capitalizes on the home and away football games with OSU this month as anchors. And of course, we all know Cougs love to compete and win. Designed to boost engagement and pride, the campaign features our largest-ever membership discount, twenty-five percent off all levels, with a goal of five hundred new memberships or level upgrades throughout the month of November. As collective membership goals are reached, additional exclusive benefits and discounts will be unlocked for all WSU AA members, like discounts for football games and unlocking Cougar Collectors Series verticals. We're already at about fifty percent of that goal of five hundred, and we'd love your help in making sure our school rises to the top in this friendly showdown. If you are already a WSU AA member, thank you. If you would like to upgrade your membership to Life or Platinum, this would be a great month to do so. If you know any Cougs that aren't members of the WSU AA quite yet, please encourage them to join or consider giving them the gift of membership. Christmas is right around the corner. In closing, in every corner of our work, through events, storytelling, digital engagement, and recognition, the Alumni Association is strengthening Cougar pride and supporting WSU's mission to inspire, connect, and engage the global Cougar family. Thank you for the opportunity to share these highlights, and thank you for all you do to lead and support the university's efforts. And go Cougs. With that, I'll bring it back over to Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tracy. That was excellent.
Anybody have any questions for Tracy while we have Tracy and Mariah? Okay, Tracy, again, thank you to you and your leadership capacity, as well as all the volunteers. And then, of course, Mariah, to you and your staff for everything that happens throughout the Alumni Association and our amazing alumni network. With that, I'll take a few minutes to share updates from the foundation and on the development side. Again, let me start, as I try to do every time, by thanking each of you, the Regents, for your time and service to WSU. When Regent Ramos gave a sampling of your engagement beyond the meetings, it was a reminder of just how much you invest in Washington State and how many ways you do it. So I just want to start with gratitude. Welcome, Regent Klein. It's nice to see you. Appreciate your service as well. I spent part of the morning crossing out what was my outline. Sometimes it's because the president highlights something that I was gonna highlight, or Tracy does. So my notes are not something that are what you'd call well-organized. I'll start where I normally do from a development standpoint, just a update on year-to-date. You know, we submit the slide at the end of the month, forty-seven million. As of this morning, that number is up to sixty-one million dollars in private support of WSU fiscal year-to-date, so July one through yesterday. But thank you, Regent, right? I agree. And I want, my version of that is applauding the Cougar Nation for their support of Washington State University. So I appreciate the acknowledgement of the generosity of our Cougs. I've mentioned before, the philanthropic process is not linear, but we are literally on pace within a percentage point in terms of number of days in the fiscal year. We're about thirty-seven percent through the fiscal year. We are thirty-eight percent toward our hundred and sixty-million-dollar goal. That's a weird phenomenon. Don't put that in pen. It won't happen very often. But normally, the summer months are a little slower. So the fact we're a little bit ahead is noteworthy. And it's a reflection, we are having a really strong year in philanthropy at Washington State. The president highlighted that we recently received a state contributions from Lou Woodward. And I want to just, I don't want to use a digital photo because it won't be that accurate. Think of this as a sketch. Lou's connection to WSU, you know, not an alum, his wife's not an alum. They were referred to WSU by an alum who's not a veterinarian, close to the veterinary college in the Teaching House, but not a veterinarian. The good things were happening in Washington State. This is more than fifteen years ago. Come down to Pullman, check out what was happening in our College Veterinary Medicine, the VTH, Better Teaching Hospital. I talked to the volunteer last week to thank him for his role in this fifteen years ago. And he said, Mike, it's a little bit the person, you know, that plants the tree, knowing they'll never actually necessarily benefit from the shade of the tree. And much of that is how we view developments. It's oftentimes a pretty long process. But my message to you is that we are all advocates for WSU and philanthropy at Washington State, introducing people that you think may benefit from WSU or see the benefits of WSU, whether that's scholarships or the hospital. Fun footnote, the volunteer said, Mike, I'm not sure this happens without Charlie. And if you've been at WSU a long time, Charlie was in charge of communications for VetMed for a long time. Charlie Powell pushed out a ton of fantastic stories. In this case, Charlie drove Lou and his wife to Lewiston through a snowstorm because they couldn't get out of Pullman. So but for Charlie, literally volunteering to drive through the snow, how does this journey go? And so my message to everybody is we're all in development. Charlie did a lot of great things for WSU and the vet school. The development officers, the deans, a volunteer saying, I think you'd like to maybe see what happens down at WSU. So again, I've mentioned before, it's a team sport. The team's bigger than sometimes we think it is. And so I encourage all of you to continue your advocacy for WSU and to build those bridges where you otherwise may not see them. Again, Lou didn't go to WSU. The volunteer's not a vet. So those opportunities are everywhere. Yesterday, we talked about the endowment. I appreciate, again, the opportunity to share some information on that. The updated figure for the endowment as of the end of October, I'm sorry, the end of September, is eight hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And that grew from the seven ninety-five number in June, is a combination of market performance and some significant additions to the endowment. Part of Lou's estate will be, is being endowed. The endowment, as we talked about yesterday, has a huge impact on WSU. Grateful for the investment committee, and then I'm grateful for contributions to the endowment. They have a significant benefit. The president mentioned that WSU Foundation Board of Directors was in Pullman in October. In addition to a really impactful conversations and investment from them of their time and their treasure, we also elected a new slate of officers. I just want to acknowledge Liz Pritchard. Liz is from Ritzville, currently lives, she's retired, lives in Michigan, will take over as the chair in January. And then our vice chair will be Jack Pello. Jack is from Walla Walla and currently lives now in Salt Lake. So a new leadership for the foundation starting January. It was Regent Ramos that mentioned a couple of the Regents, unbelievable, those Regents, Pika, Wright, Serna, and Hussein were able to join us at the Regents' Distinction Alums for our presentation. What an amazing evening that was. Huge team effort, folks from Mariah's team, Victoria, the principal giving team, president's office, a lot of moving parts, the Regents. But it's nice to be able to recognize alums of distinction at Washington State. So I appreciate your engagement in that. And again, congratulations to Tricia Rakes for all of her accomplishments. What a remarkable representative of Washington State University. I want to, we talked earlier, I thought about instead following my notes, just asking Kyle to replay Regent Dick's. I mean, she did part of my job this morning, just in terms of talking about the importance of philanthropy and working together. And then others mentioned alignment. And so I want to be really clear, when you watch the thread of messaging, whether it's something that comes from Pam or Mariah or my team, you'll start to see consistency. If I asked you what the philanthropic priorities for Washington State University are today, you don't have to go through your notes. You've heard it in the last two days. We have to compete and win athletic success. Yesterday, we talked about funding a new project in Cougar Athletics, which we may need to take out a loan for. We'll see how the pledges come in, but for those out there, whether it's the Regents or the cyber people, this is where your passion can go. Help support the fan experience at Washington State. The president talked about the Integrated Sciences Building. This is not a building that will benefit a college or a department of Washington State University. For those of you interested in supporting a wide swath of students and the teaching and learning that happens on the Pullman Campus and beyond, this is a wonderful opportunity. Invest in the Integrated Science Building. For those of you that have heard the drumbeat of the importance of enrollment and retention of our students, support the Crimson Optics Scholarship Fund. If you go on our website for the Division Foundation, it says, you know, support one of these priorities. What's it say? Fan experience, Crimson Optics Scholarship, Integrated Science Building. This is the alignment you talked about. And so I encourage everybody to contemplate additional private support consistent with the priorities of the institution. Thank you all again for everything you're doing for us. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you for everything that you're doing. You know, it's, you're as big for this as everyone else here and all the work that you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And happy Friday.
Happy Friday. That's welcome. Thank you, Mariah.
I'll see you in here.
Awesome energy. Okay, so we've been at it for two hours. How are y'all feeling? Need a bio break? Yes, we need a five-minute bio break. Thank you.
Always.
So Kyle, are we good? Okay, thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda before us today. A full of the minutes from the September 17th, 2025 retreat and the September 19th, 2025 meeting. These items were included in your meeting packet for your preview. Would any regent like to remove either item from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing no requests for removal, I move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Regent Chair. For those, I'm just going to call for the vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, sorry. Those in favor say yea. Those against saying nah. Sir, different. Next on the agenda are our committee reports. And I would like to remind the audience members that the Board of Regents committees convened yesterday for a full day of meetings to review, discuss and ask questions about each agenda item presented for information, future action or action. And while today's formal meeting proceedings may appear to move quickly, please be assured that each action item has been given thoughtful consideration and thorough deliberation during the committee discussions. And as a reminder, recordings of these committee meetings, as well as previous Board of Regents meetings, are available on the Board of Regents YouTube channel, which could be accessed at our website. So the first meeting to provide a report will be me, the executive governance committee. And you know, I'll just be brief. Yesterday, we had an excellent update from Provost Chris Riley Tillman and our new chief administrative officer, Carrie Davidson, to give us an update on the WSU system redesign process. We appreciated all of the detail and and actually got recruited to do a videotaping of Dark Hundred this morning in support of the survey request. So we'll be sending that out as a reminder to please engage in the process.
I believe the team gave me the thumbs up. They said we're going to use it. So good stuff.
So we have much to do in terms of action items. And I just want to emphasize again that the thoughtful nature of all the work that goes into this, all the leadership information. We'll continue on with our committee reports. Our next committee to report will be the Strategic and Operational Excellence Report with our vice chair, Serna.
Well, thank you very much. We had several items, five items actually. We would get President Cantwell provided an update on the WSU strategic pillars that were outlined in her presentation to the board in September. And the vice president for research, Kim Kristin, and director of the School of Electrical Engineering and Computer Science, Anath Kalman Nariman, provided a presentation on artificial intelligence and WSU research impacts. We also heard from the executive director from corporate for corporate engagement, Alex Peach, and community attributes incorporated president and CEO, Chris Metford. They presented the results of the economic impact survey that WSU has on the state of Washington. And Chancellor Dave Saley provided an update on the WSU global campus. And the assistant director of alumni engagement, Jamaica Valdila. And I presented the revised nomination for the Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award. There was one action item from yesterday's discussion. The action is to select a recipient of the, for the 2025 Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award. We're going to discuss those nominees now. However, to protect the identity of those nominated, we'll identify the candidates by C1 and C2. And well, C1 and 2 and N. And I ask that during these ongoing discussions, the regions avoid disclosing other information that would reveal their identities. So with that in mind, open to any discussion regarding qualifications of the two nominees presented to us for consideration. Yes, Regent, shower.
I appreciate all of the work of the committee, the Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award Committee. Both candidates are so worthy of recognition. I have had time to review the packet of materials and the letters of support, which are impressive. I think they speak to the exceptional contributions of our outstanding alumni. And after reviewing all of the materials, I thought maybe I would kick us off with a motion. I really wanted to look at kind of what is our purpose and our mission at WSU? And how have these alumni really represented that? And again, such a challenging decision, but I've come to the conclusion that I just really believe the global impact and the profound influence of candidates C1 and C2 felt to me as our candidates that we would want to support with this award. So I would like to make a motion that the Board of Regents select candidates C1 and C2 as our 2025 Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award.
Anyone want to second that question or second? Thank you very much, Regent Pika. And so I moved that the Board of, any others?
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah, we can have.
Sorry, could you put it in slightly clearer language? I'm not sure what the motion contains.
I am moving that the Board of Regents select candidates C1 and C2 as our 2025 Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award.
And then, and then that will be voted upon in a private session?
No, right now. Regent. Pika, just second that. So now we just discuss it and see if folks, any comments?
Can I make a comment? I would also like to say how significant our candidate contributions have been globally. And the quality of the package, the engagement of the community, the advocacy for all the candidates makes this a very difficult decision. And we've, we've had prior discussions on the topic. And after, you know, thinking about it, I just think it's, it's an example of how we can celebrate critical global impact of our alumni. And I, I'm just thrilled that we have great quality candidates.
Any other comments? We have a motion and seconded. So I moved that the Board of Regents select candidates C1 and 2 as a recipient of the Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award for 2025.
A point of order. I think that I made the motion.
Yes.
And it was seconded. So I think we should vote on that, which my motion you just made in addition.
All right. Well, I just want to cover all faces here, you know? And I say, so there's no doubt. So all right, so those in favor say yea. Yea. Those against say nah? Nah or nay? Okay. All right, then the motion passes and the candidates C1 and 2 will be the Regents' Distinguished Award recipients. All right, are we all clear? Thank you very much. And that concludes the Strategic and Operational Excellence Committee.
Thank you, Regent Serna. Regent Wright, we look forward to your finance and administration.
Thank you. I will do my best to be brief. I have the pleasure of working with Regents Klein and Hunt on this committee. And thank you, everybody, for their work and input. And we covered eight information items yesterday. We will then move on to four action items. We had reports yesterday from Chief Audit Executive Auditor Heather Lopez, provided an internal audit update. And there will be another report at our next meeting in January in Spokane. Chief Financial Officer Lisa Frenelli and Vice President of Finance Business Services, Matt Skinner, provided an update on the fiscal year 2026 financial performance of the budget execution. And I'm happy to say that there were no surprises, which is what you want from a budget report. Leslie and Athletics CFO John Harlow presented their Cougar Athletics financial update. And then followed by Leslie and Matt presented the fiscal year 2026 budget execution on carryforward and becaying earnings as applied to core and non-core. I thought it was an excellent report. We learned about two more financial topics. The WSU Foundation University Endowment update was presented by Leslie and Mike and Don. We had a good walk through, wonderful opportunity to take the endowment message out to keep. Second topic was focused on the WSU land grant endowment presented by Leslie and Matt. Vice President for external affairs and government relations, Belinda Becker Fentner, Bent, Fenter. Vice President for research, Kim Kristin, provided an update on the impact of state and federal developments on the fiscal year 2026 budget execution, fiscal year 2027 budget development, and gave us a short update on recent elections across the state. The last item was Leslie and Matt provided information regarding the fiscal year 2026. The last item was Leslie and Matt provided information regarding the fiscal year 2027 budget development, calendar, workflow, and expectations. So those were the information items from yesterday. Any questions on that before we move on to action items? Thank you. There are four action items from yesterday to, from yesterday's discussion. The first action item being presented is the WSU Coleman South Side Dining and Market Renovation Project Budget. Now, we've heard about this over the last couple of meetings. It again is in all of the prior minutes. And we're, I'm going to move for an approval of the South Side Dining renovation. This is phase one. And I move that the Board of Regents approve WSU Coleman South Side Dining and Market Renovation Project Budget with a total budget not to exceed $10 million, authorizing the project to proceed to design and construction using the design build process pursuant to Revised Code of Washington 39-10 and further delegate authority to the President or her designated to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the project within the budgeted.
Is there a second? Agreed. Any further discussion?
I would just add that this is well overdue and appreciated. It's moving forward.
Yeah, for any of the public listening, it's the road tunnel.
Myself included. Okay, I will call for the vote then. For those in favor, say yay. Anyone else? Thank you, Sam. Say nay. Okay, so we have approved.
It is approved. Congratulations. A lot of hard work is coming into this. The next item is very exciting. It's the next action item is to vote on the Cougar Athletic Fan and Student Athlete Experience at Giza Field, the project budget for that new video. I don't want to call it a scoreboard because it's not. It's just a project that we're all familiar with. And just for the record, there is a deadline by which this has to be funded because there is a deadline by which this has to be, has to commence construction in order to have it installed for next season. So that's why we are advancing this now.
And so for that reason, I wish to have it noted for the record that this item is being presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents' Bylaw 11.12.0.
This is a completely donor funded project. I move that the Board of Regents approve the Cougar Athletics Fan and Student Athlete Experience at Giza Feeling Field with a total project budget not to exceed $12 million plus interest and closing costs associated with financing if approved. The Board authorizes the project to proceed to design and construction using the design build process pursuant to RCW 39-10. Further delegates authority to the President or her designated to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the project within the budgeted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Regent Serna, is there any further discussion?
I just would like to reiterate, one, a thank you to the private donors who have stepped up to help us improve the fan experience. And two, to reinforce the this partnership that I think we will look to do more of things like this with our private donors. And that we have a good example with our Cougar Baseball Club House. And we did something very similar to this with private donors and been able to see how that has come to fruition in a really physically responsible way. So I just, I appreciate the the effort and the work and want those that are listening or hearing to understand that we've proven track record of taking private donor money and being able to do projects like this at WSU. And look forward to doing more of those, not necessarily just for athletics, but for all things WSU.
Thank you, Regent. Any further comments? Okay, so I will call for the vote. Those in favor say yay.
Yay.
Any against? Sam. Okay, so we have approved that item.
Next item is the financing for this project. I move that the Board of Regents approve approve a general revenue application resolution to authorize the issuance and sale of bonds or other obligations in one or more series to be used for phase one of the Fan and Student Athlete Enhancement Program at Giza Field with proceeds for the project not to exceed $5 million, a maximum term not to exceed 5.5 years, and a maximum interest rate not to exceed 6% and delegates authority to the President or her designated to sell bonds or other obligations, including determining the final issue size, maturity schedule, redemption provisions, and timing of sale.
And just as a reminder, to have it noted for the record that this item is being presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents' Bylaws 11.12.0. And thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, so. You have the final message.
And the, the final action item to bring before you today from our committee is the for the academic year 2026, 2027 tuition rates for undergraduate and graduate programs. And as Chair of this committee, if I may just have the liberty to comment that this, this brought forth a lot of conversation. We received a lot of input from our constituency, graduate, undergraduate, and community. I will say that I was deeply moved by the passion and the expression of strong feelings about this subject. And I balance that also with what I consider to be my speaking for myself fiduciary responsibility as a Regent in the financial stability and future of our institution. And some of these decisions are difficult, challenging, for some maybe painful. But I just want to acknowledge that we had robust discussions about this and I thank everybody for their input. So with that, I move that the Board of Regents set tuition rates for an academic year 2026, 27 for graduate and undergraduate programs as proposed.
Is there a second? Certainly further discussion?
Maybe I could add something before we move on. I think as a student, I'm taking into consideration past previous votes by student Regents and I'm also taking the messages that my students have given me into consideration. I understand the financial impacts of having that 2.8 instead of that 3.3. But I just wanted to announce that and emphasize that to those listening.
Thank you, Regent Hesse. Any other comments?
I would like to make comment. I just recall some feedback over the years that you know, we we take all of the input sincerely and like he reached it right.
Five minutes.
Balancing.
We have to go in about five minutes.
Regent Hunt, you are off mute. But anyway, I appreciate all the effort that goes into this. It's certainly a thoughtful deliberation. So I will call for a vote. And for those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Thank you.
That concludes the Finance and Administration Committee Report.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Ramos.
Great, thank you. Next, we will have our Academic and Student Affairs Committee report with Regent Pika.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. Our committee two met yesterday and we had one information item, one action item, and a written report. Our information items can, once again, insisted of a mission moment, which was very both informative and I would say delightful. The Dean of Libraries, Trevor Bond. Dean Bond covered a lot of grounds and gave us a taste of the scope of the libraries at WSU in a rather short period. And he also passed around some biscottis, which were much appreciated to the group.
And stationary.
Stationary, that's right. It's going to work. He touched on included such things which I found really interesting and just for the benefit of those listening facts of our library system, which subscribing, we subscribe to over 80,000 journals and hold more than 2 million printed ebooks in WSU's possession. Libraries serve the entire WSU community around the state with in-person online services. They're also piloting a new generation of AI tools to leverage our scholarly collections. It's also the new home of the WSU Press, which is much appreciated. Vote was Riley Tillman pointed out that that wouldn't have happened without Dean Bond's leadership. Dean Bond said it wouldn't have happened without his leadership. So that was very also when, when I visited there not too long ago, this was evident that the library visit that we had is a meeting place and there were students there and you visually showed that yesterday. It's a very welcoming and supportive environment for students and there was success. And I'll just finish that. I love the quote. There was a quote included in this report, which was by Professor David Crowder in the Department of Entomology, which said, "A library is not just a physical space with books. It also maintains access to science and the digital world." As a scientist of 25 years, I have learned more broadly the extent that the libraries support every person at our university, which is a tribute I think to what's going on there under Dean Bond's leadership. We moved on to an action item, which I'll ask you to vote on today, which included to establish the Department of Social Work and the College of Education, Sport, and the Human Sciences. Goals Riley Tillman, our Chancellor, Sandra Haines, and Dean Karen Thomas Brown brought this forward for our consideration. And just a side note that social work at WSU has been and is currently housed in the College of Nursing. It has been determined for a number of reasons that the academic discipline of social work would be more appropriately aligned with the interdisciplinary nature of the College of Education supports in the human sciences. So with that, I would like to make that motion. Chair Ramos, I move that the Board of Regents establish a Department of Social Work in the College of Education, Sport, and Sciences.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those against? Okay.
We had one written report, which included to extend a bachelor's of science degree in computer engineering to the Ever Campus. And that's the end of our report.
Thank you, Regent Pika. So that concludes our committee reports. And in accordance with RCW 4230.110, the Regents will now hold an executive session to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. This session will be closed. The executive session will conclude in about an hour unless it's extended by further announcement. If any action is taken as a result of these discussions, it will be taken following the conclusion of the executive session and open session. At this time, I would ask anyone who is not a Regent or whom I have not invited to participate in the executive session to leave the room. And for those of you not coming back, Thanksgiving is in about a week. And you know, I just want to express the deep gratitude that we have for all of you. Wish you and your families a safe and happy celebration and we'll send you the football game.
Don't take a turkey money if you like.
Okay, Adam.
One third, next region.
City.
Thank you. So thanks. The regions will now reconvene in open session. The regions just met in executive session to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation for RCW 42.30.110. There's no action taken as a result of those conversations. So at this point, I'd like to adjourn. The regents need...
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Bill Kooks.